Well, so many blessings, so many gifts, many of which we're not even aware of. But it helps us to be grateful, to be appreciative for things like joy and peace and patience and kindness and goodness, things that only come from you by your spirit. Without you, we can do nothing, and we wouldn't have those qualities. So we pray for that, pray for your wisdom, pray for your spirit to guide this meeting, that your will would be done, and that we would do your work and help the citizens of this county. In your name I pray. Amen.
Mr. Markovitch, was he listening to page?
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the May 2nd, 2023 waiver amendments, do I have a motion?
What's up, Lou?
Second.
Motion second. Any comments? I hear none, all in favor? Okay, county attorney comments, Mr. David Root.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just a few. One, again, I need a motion to amend the agenda and remove the Project Ironman items. It must be ordinance 2023-12 along with resolution 2023-08.
Come on. Second. Are you in discussion? Do you know, all in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe we'll have that matter ready for first reading during the next meeting. The other matter relates to ordinance 2023-07. This has been a project that went by the codename Project Made. We received the company name and have believed to disclose that to the public. It is Mine, M-E-Y-N, but pronounced M-I-N-E. Mine America LLC. So I just wanted to note that. We just received that clearance this afternoon, so the agenda is updated of that ordinance. Obviously, go under that exact company name. The last thing I wanted to just give some reference to was, I understand we've got a number of public hearings. So when we get to the third reading, as opposed to having to recite the full text of what you read during the public hearing part, you can just reference the number. And we'll have the ordinance name on the screen, so folks and audiences can follow along. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Root. County administrative comments, Ms. Amanda Brock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. I do have one matter of housekeeping this evening as well, and that is, I would like a motion to remove the purchase of two new haul-in tractors with side mount side mowers for placement on the June 6th agenda, please.
Come on.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. What's that, what page number is that on?
That is page six of six, top of the page.
Do I have any other comments? I hear none, all in favor?
That is all, thank you, sir.
We have proclamation 2023-03, a proclamation recognizing National Safe Boating Week. Whereas on average, 600 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the U.S., approximately 75% of these fatalities are caused by drownings. Whereas the vast majority of boating accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment, not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning would be alive today had they won an appropriate life jacket. Therefore, we, the Oconee County Council, do hereby support the goals of the Safe Boating Campaign and recognize May 20th through the 26th, 2023, as National Safe Boating Week and the start of a year-round effort to promote safe boating. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
That is five, eh?
And then...
It's here.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Ready, one, two, three.
Please.
You're good.
Okay, next, we have public comment session. For public comments, you have four minutes. I'll keep time. When you get to the one-minute mark, I'll hold a page, one-minute warning, and when you're timed, sir, I'll turn around to the stop sign.
First, we have Mr. Bob Hoover.
My name is Bob Hoover, and I'm representing the Oconee Maine Society along with Janet Barwick. I know we promised you a summary, and we're going to have that to you in a few days to give out to everybody. And the only other point of business is, we'd like to renew our request from the last meeting to restore the $5,000 to the snack program. And that's all we have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Root.
Next, we have Mr. Mickey Haney.
Good evening. My name's Mickey Haney. We all know what time of year this is. And I think you have a unique opportunity for the county. We have a time we can take pause by not accepting this budget, intercepting a lesser amount, and requiring some responsible governing. We just heard in the last meeting about a change order, like it's no big deal, just part of governing. Almost as if we forget, this is not the county's money. This is the citizen's money that we're spending. We play it off as if the government's always going to have that money there. It's time to take a pause. It's time to start governing as if this money is not readily available in the near future. Many times, I've heard comments from the people here in this group.
Root.
Oh, they're not going to mind a few extra dollars paid out on taxes. We're working off older fees, so therefore, we should raise them, without any explanation of why. This year, we stated that the rock quarry no longer has a issue with supply, but we still want to raise the fees to be competitive. Who does that hurt? The citizens of Oconee County. What I'm asking for y'all to do, if it was, if I had a choice, would set the budget back to 50 million. I would ask for a post-mortem to be done on the Far House project to see why it went the route it did, and what are we going to do in the future to keep it from happening? I would ask for all projects to have a scope sheet with measurables that can be determined at the end of the project to ensure that this county achieves their goals. I know that y'all can only deal through the county administrator. Give her the tools to measure her by, so you can ensure that the citizens are getting their money's worth. It bothers me when you got governing bodies that are okay with adjustments, spending, and our growth rate is far below our government growth rate. The two do not match at all. It has to be reined back in. We have to understand what we're doing, why we're doing it, and are we doing it for the right reasons? Are we doing it for the citizens, or are we doing it to grow government? If the answer is, we're growing government, then shame on you. Do your jobs, do it for the citizens. Thank you.
Same.
Ms. Linda Bach?
My name's Linda Bach. Thank you for this time to speak. I never hear any mention of all the illegal immigrants or refugees moving into Oconee County, nothing. According to what I've read, over 5 million illegal immigrants have come to the U.S. since Biden took office. For the fiscal year 2023, the refugee number was supposed to be 125,000. I believe the actual number of refugees coming in to be much higher than that. We all know they're here, the schools know they're here, they can't turn them away. Some immigrants may be legal, refugees are supposed to be legal, but how do we know? Our church had a speaker come to recruit help for immigrants or refugees. I didn't hear the talk, but I'm guessing it was probably world relief. They work with the South Carolina Department of Social Service Refugee Program. From information I read, South Carolina was approved to resettle over 600 refugees. Does anyone keep track of the actual number? Do they have to notify anyone in our local government that these people are here? Do we even know how many are coming into our county? Is there any attempt to keep track of illegal immigrants? This definitely impacts costs for us. The services they use are paid for by the taxpayers. If the federal government isn't helping, then it's up to the states and local governments to uphold laws, protect its citizens, and look out for the welfare of the tax-paying public. I called the Oconee County Sheriff's Department the other day and asked if there was anything that they were doing. The answer was nothing. I just feel there has to be something we can do. We can't just ignore this problem. While many may be families, others are not. Cartels are moving in all over, drugs are already a problem for us. By doing nothing, we're declaring ourselves a sanctuary county. Thank you.
Ms. Lillian Lusk?
Thank you all for the opportunity to speak. I'm Lillian Lusk, and I'm from Fair Play, and I'm speaking in favor of the ordinance that puts DOT first in line before the approval of subdivisions that abut state roads. You all know that I spoke in front of you against Sewer South because I was worried about the impact on agricultural lands down there. Of course, that was approved, and the floodgates are open for developers, businesses, subdivisions to come into our lower part of the county. So in saying that, I'm sure Fair Play is going to become the thriving metropolis that everybody has dreamed of. And so, since we can't stop this growth, I think, because many of us want it stopped, we have to accept it and then make sure that the growth is smart and that the growth is safe. So DOT has always been part of the process of approving subdivisions abutting against the state road. So why even have this ordinance? I would suggest, and I could be wrong, but why would you put an ordinance where you put DOT first if in the past, approval of these subdivisions plans have gone through so quickly that the developer puts shovel to dirt so fast that by the time DOT gets in, their recommendations, I mean, it's already too late? And so, the developer doesn't have to, you know, follow what these rules and regulations are. So why do you have DOT? It's for safety. You know, they're looking at things like highway deaths. That's their main, their main purpose is to prevent highway deaths and make sure there's not congestion. They do things like, look at how many mailboxes with the site distances, I guess setbacks, and possibly even make a developer have to do something like put in a frontage road, which could cost them a heck of a lot of money in order to make the egress into and out of the subdivision safe. So if I was a developer, like, I know Dwight Baker got up here, and I wouldn't even have thought anything about this if I wouldn't have listened to the things he said about how my plans were approved in two or three days in the past, but now it's taking longer, and I'm against this ordinance. Why would a developer be against an ordinance like that? Well, if DOT isn't going to come in till the last minute, and he's not going to be made to do the things that they want him to do, then it's going to save him a heck of a lot of money. So why would I be for this ordinance? So the question is, what are we for? Are we for eliminating or reducing the number of crosses on the side of the highway, or are we for saving a developer a little bit of dough? Now, I do know, I did listen, I've been watching some of the planning commission meetings and some of your meetings, and Mr. Nick's at a very valid point that all of these ordinances do cost the homeowner, you know, more money. But the question is, what is the higher cost? Do we save lives, or do we save somebody some jack? So I urge you to pass this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Mr. Jake Marsengill?
Good afternoon. I just wanted to ask, is it common practice for members of a planning commission to use their position for personal gain? Mr. Gary Galen is doing such, or pushing the junkyard ordinance to keep from driving by cars parked in my yard, saying that the cars are decreasing the value of his property. I think that's a blatant misuse of office. Are you guys kind of weaponizing the planning commission to work against the citizens? I mean, I work several hours a day, and I just try to do what's right. I own a junkyard. Most of the people do not know what a junkyard does. But if we didn't have junkyards, there would be junk all over the county, and then the council would be trying to provide a service to pick up junk and process it and do something with it. And y'all got your hands full already with everything the county already does. So I'm just wondering, you know, how's Mr. Galen get to use his position to try to do something to increase his property value, because he don't like to drive by my personal property? He's not even driving by the junkyard, he's driving by my personal property. He's taken pictures and tried to present to the planning commission, but it's not like he took pictures all over the Oconee County. He took pictures of one piece of property. He didn't even take pictures of my junkyard, he took pictures of my personal property and pushing the junkyard ordinance, making it harder for me to make a living if I'm going to have to come to some kind of unreasonable ordinance with all these setbacks. If you've got five and a half acres of land with the setbacks that they're wanting, okay, I'm going to have two acres to work on. So that's, you know, limited in what I can do, and I try to keep a small carbon footprint. But I just want to know if you guys could do anything about this personal vendetta, him using his office for personal gain? Thank you.
Okay, there's no more public comment. We're moved to council member comment, and I will lead off. Mr. Hoover?
I appreciate the meeting of the day, and I apologize, I'm not fully followed up with Ms. Brock. I did mention to Ms. Brock that we haven't met, but nothing in detail, but I will catch up with that. Mr. Can't read my handwriting, I'll come back. I missed Linda Bach, the illegal immigrants. I don't know that the sheriff's department is getting any help from the federal government as far as when they arrest people, you know, it's federal laws, so I don't know what, as a county, we can do to enforce federal laws. It's certainly something that we can bring to the law enforcement, public health committee and start a discussion on and educating ourselves on what possible remedies we may have, and I'd like to encourage us to do that in the next law enforcement committee meeting. Ms. Lillian Lusk, the, that ordinance is to put in order so that the county staff doesn't use resources to work on a plot that's going to be not approved by DOT? I'm not aware of any project, and Ms. Brock, you can answer this, of any project that would be, that may have got a jump and started development before DOT approval.
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman, but I'm looking.
Uh, not off the top of my head.
It's rare.
So it's more or less to streamline county resources so that resources aren't wasted on a project that may not get approved by the, by the state? Mr. Haney? You're correct, every dollar does count, and I've trended inflation and growth since 2016, and if our budgets have followed, been within that range, then we'd spent 55 million less dollars total on that time. It's kind of like Ronald Reagan says, there's no, there's no, nothing more permanent than a temporary government program. So once you've grown to that level, it's, now how do you pull it back, you know? I like your idea of scope sheets and tracking projects. I've thought about, too, with these change orders, to request a, at least a quarterly or monthly report to council on change orders requested on big projects, so that at least we can track it, because you give this contingency, and like the last one, we didn't know what was going out until we passed a $100,000 contingency. I think that's something for transparency and keeping an eye on the taxpayers' dollars we can do a better job of by getting reports of, of change orders. Mr. Marsengill, that's, is he still here? That's, that's concerns that's not to be taken lightly, and it's not the first time I've heard them, and I don't believe I've spoken with you before, and I may have, I just don't remember, but I've heard it before. And with that said, I want to at least address it and make sure it's properly addressed. I would like to, I'm going to make a motion to direct county administration to investigate Mr. Marsengill's concerns, and I'd like for me and Mr. Mas to be a part of that, that team that the administrator, you know, goes into. So I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Need further discussion?
So with it being a committee with an appointee, which I don't, I understand, when Mr. Marsengill spoke before, and I was hoping it was addressed then, because I do, never do I want somebody from planning or any committee using their power like that. And if we're addressing a specific ordinance, it needs to be addressed by numbers, not a specific property. If you're going to present a property, in all honesty, it's better to present a property that doesn't even exist in Oconee County, so you don't have that. I will agree with you, is, if you, you know, law enforcement, I'm not on that committee anymore, but they were discussing that junkyard ordinance, set it back down to planning again, where it's been for forever. There is a place for those in every county. So, I mean, to me, I don't know if I want to vote on two council members being involved in investigating a committee person. To me, it's been usually addressed through staff. I would be more inclined to state that Mr. Coley and Mr. Root and Ms. Brock to do that rather than involve, I mean, as a council member, I don't know if I'd want to put myself in that situation personally. Just, again, my two cents, while I agree with what Mr. Marsengill's saying, because I do feel like that is wrong to address someone's property up here in public setting, whatever it may be. So that's just my two cents.
Mr. Chairman, I will not be voting. All the folks that serve on our committees and commissions are doing it for service, not for money. I don't know Mr. Marsengill, but I don't believe we should have a witch hunt of a committee member that's doing it voluntarily, so I will not be voting. So we, we're an elected body, we're elected to represent the people of the county, and it's, it's strong allegations that we're not having a trial up here or an investigation here, where it's important to have council representation to be involved in the allegation or in the investigation, and that way, it can be done in a private manner, not up here with, at this time. Does he might have any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I think, given Mr. Davis's comments, I think we probably need to have a discussion with Mr. Root. He's got a better idea of legal, legal rules before we actually put a, I'll call a committee together to investigate the allegations.
So I will withdraw that motion, and I'll make a motion to amend the agenda for executive session, since it's a personnel issue, to discuss it further.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pearson is chairman of that committee. Would you come up and answer some questions, please, sir?
Let's not.
Mr. Hart, I don't, I don't want to have the open court trial right now.
Is it a motion to add?
I remove, I pulled my motion, my original motion, I now have a motion to discuss this matter further in executive session with legal advice.
And I'll take a supermajority to pass to amend the agenda.
Okay.
Are we, you have the second. Are we in discussion?
Yes.
So to add a item has to be emergency, correct?
To add item first, as a preliminary matter, needs a supermajority. If the item, any action is going to be taken on, which I do not foresee, is going to be discussed in executive session, it wouldn't need that exigent or emergency circumstance qualifier, so we don't need it at this point, there's no action that's being contemplated. Usually, yes, if there's any kind of action that's going to be taken, you need to state what the exigent circumstance is. As I'm understanding now, it's jumping on it, we don't have another meeting for three weeks, and there's no action that's going to be taken, so we just need that supermajority.
We can discuss it in executive session, the process, and if we need to, we can place it on the next meeting agenda.
Okay, so you don't want to do it today?
No, I, I would like to discuss it today, and then, based on information, then we can place it on the next agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to put it on the next agenda, so we actually have information forward. I think Mr. Marsengill's brought some information before that could be useful during that. I mean, I have heard and seen some of the pictures in, in there, I wasn't aware until he spoke last year, Mr. Marsengill, if I'm correct about that. So I would like that, those documents to be available during that time, which would be the reason for my motion to do it be a non-emergency.
That'd be a motion to amend?
That's a motion to amend.
Second. All in favor of the motion to amend the motion?
To add item first, is a preliminary matter, needs a super majority, if the item, that any action is gonna be taken on, which I do not foresee is, is gonna be discussed in executive session, it wouldn't need that exigent or emergency circumstance qualifier, um, so we don't need it at this point, there's no action that's being contemplated. Usually, yes, if there's any kind of action that's gonna be taken, you need to state what the exigent circumstance is. As I'm standing now, it's jumping on it, we don't have another meeting for three weeks, and, and there's no action that's gonna be taken, so.
We can discuss it in executive session, the, the process, and if we need to, we can place it on the next meeting agenda.
Okay, so you don't wanna do it today?
No, I, I, I would like to discuss it today, and then, based on information, then we can place it on the next agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to put it on the next agenda, so we actually have information forward. I think Mister Marsengill's brought some information before that could be useful during that. I mean, I have heard and seen some of the pictures in, in there, I wasn't aware until he spoke. I think last year, Mister Marsengill, if I'm correct, about that, so I would like that, those documents to be available during that time, which would be the reason for my motion to do it be a non-emergency.
That'd be a motion to amend?
That's a motion to amend.
Second. All in favor of the motion to amend the motion?
Uh.
Uh. Three, two.
That is three, two.
So, that's the amended motion, so now we need a motion on the motion. Okay, motion to, uh, we have a motion, we have a second, I, all in favor of all the now motion that's amended. All in favor?
Uh, just to put it on the next meeting, correct?
Executive session meeting, we have there all the information we can get.
We'll have a public investigation. Okay.
What?
It'll be a public investigation at that point, it'll be on the agenda to review the documents.
I don't think that's what my motion was to add on public.
Executive session.
It should be an executive.
You can't do that. You did it for executive session, okay, I understand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think my motion was for public investigation, that's not in my title.
Any other comments for public comments?
Mister Chairman, uh, number one, if people could speak up, uh, I've been suffering now for a month with allergies, and if I break out coughing, please excuse me, but, uh, my ears are all stuffed up also, so if I mishear something, it sounds like I'm dumb, it's not, I just can't hear. But, uh, also, Ms. Lusk, thank you, safety is number one in anything we should consider. When I was in the corporate world, it didn't matter how much it cost, safety was number one to keep employees and people safe. And council, it should be number one for safety for our citizens and, and visitors of Oconee County, thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. I would have a public hearing for the following ordinances. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one, ordinance to establish the budget for Oconee County and to provide for the levy of taxes for ordinary county purposes, for the tri-county technical college special revenue fund, for the emergency services protection special revenue fund, for the road maintenance special revenue fund, for the bridge and covert capital project fund, for the economic development capital project fund, for the parks, recreation and tourism capital project fund, for the debt services fund, for the victim services special revenue funds, for the capital vehicle equipment fund in all of Oconee County for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-three, and ending July, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. I have a motion.
Public hearing here.
Oh, I'm sorry, public hearing, is anybody here to speak?
Jennifer Johnson.
Good evening, uh, Chairman Durham, Councilman, I'm Jennifer Johnson, I am the Tenth Circuit Public Defender. I serve Anderson and Oconee Counties and have been in this role since twenty seventeen. Uh, I'm before the council today to, to address some budgeting concerns that I have. Um, I know our office is, is not one that gets a lot of spotlight or, or talked about, um, but we are a very vital, critical part of the criminal justice system. We're a very vital and critical part of public safety. Um, and it may seem counterintuitive that I'm saying we're part of public safety, when it seems like we're the folks who are supposed to spring people from your jail, but we, we are the people who very much keep your jail system running. We represent, um, and this, I have numbers from fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, that's the most recent data I have. Um, but we represent seventy-seven percent of defendants who are charged with a crime in general sessions court, which is our big, big court, basically anything outside of municipal or summary court. Seventy-seven percent our office handles. Um, in addition to that, we handle probation violations, we handle municipal courts, and we handle our summary courts. Um, in told, uh, for the, for these years, we had, according to South Carolina Court Administration, there were two thousand five hundred eighty-nine warrants that were attributed to Oconee County during that time. My office had, and that's for general sessions court, one thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven of those warrants. Um, we had a hundred and fifty-nine probation violation warrants, three hundred and seven magistrate charges, and a hundred and nineteen municipal court charges. And these, just to be clear, our office is only invoked when you have, um, people who one, are charged with a crime that carries a prison sentence, so if it doesn't carry any kind of jail time, we, we're not in for an ordinary ticket or something like that. Um, and it also requires that they qualify for our services. Um, we do use the federal poverty income guidelines, um, which is about eleven hundred dollars a month, I think, is what the qualification, so it's, it's very low for folks who qualify, um, for our services. Um, but the role we play in the system, when you have an office that handles as many cases as we do, we're there from pretty much the beginning, we try to get into the jails within seventy-two hours to see people who have been arrested and who have not been able to post bond. We interview those people, we ask who wants to, to be qualified for our services. Um, we then open the cases, file discovery motions, um, enter into negotiations with the solicitor's office. Um, we have a great relationship with the Oconee Solicitor's Office, um, I, I've, it's been an absolute pleasure to work with David Wagner and, and his staff. Um, but we've been, you know, sort of operating at a, a deficit, if you will, and, and my office is a little different. Uh, it, if, and, am I limited to four minutes here? I will, I promise I will not keep much.
I'm sorry, I did not start the clock.
Didn't start the time, I, I, I will not lawyer you to death, I promise.
Uh, there's no time, there's probably.
Okay. The, um, but, but just to, to kinda give you an overview of how our office works and how our revenue stream works, um, I am a state employee, I work for the South Carolina Commission on Indigent Defense. There is one other employee in our circuit, Lisa Pate, who actually works in the Oconee office, who is a state employee. I receive funding from the state of South Carolina, um, all of my funding from the, from the state is based on a, uh, per capita basis, so basically, we go by census numbers to determine, uh, what our ration is, um, of state funding. I get funding from Oconee County, and then I do receive funding from municipalities within Oconee County. When they enacted the South Carolina, um, statute that basically made the statewide public defender system, um, they designated that the administering county for the circuit would be the largest county within that circuit. So Anderson County actually administers all of my budgeting needs. All of my employees who work physically in the Oconee office and, and provide services for the citizens of this county are actually employees of Anderson County, it may come as a surprise to, to folks, uh, but that is how the state statute set it up. Um, so I submit a, a budget every year, and I, and Oconee County is actually a department of my Anderson County budget, so I've got Anderson County as a department, Oconee County as a department. And I have been remiss in, I think, educating you, showing you what it is that we do for the citizens of this county, showing you how we help move cases through the criminal court system, show how, we, we save you money. There's only court one time a month in Oconee County, and so if we happen to miss, if we don't have our people on top of things, you've got someone who's gonna be sitting at your county detention center for potentially another thirty days before they go to court, and I don't have to tell you guys how expensive that is. Um, but I have looked at where we are, I actually was a bit under budget last year, but that was attributed to some things that were a little beyond my control. I had, I had a woman who, um, was a legal assistant in my office who retired, and we've not backfilled her position in part because of budget concerns. We desperately need to fill that position. Um, and in addition to that, during this fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, I had the, um, head of my Oconee office, the lead, the lead attorney there who manages the office on a day-to-day basis, he left to go into private practice, so that position was open for a couple of months. I had another attorney in the office, um, who was an assistant public defender, who left and was gone for, you know, I had that position open for four months as well. So, I tell you that I came in under budget, not to pat myself on the back, but to say that I wouldn't have been in that position had I been fully staffed during that time. And so, I'm before the council to ask if I can sit down, I mean, I, I, I'm not prepared to make a formal budget meeting, and I don't think this is the, the environment to do that. Um, but to sit down and show you what our needs are, what our revenues are, what our expenses are, we're good stewards of your money. Um, and we do good work for the citizens of Oconee County. Um, so I, I invite further conversation, I invite any questions that you may have, um, if appropriate, I've got business cards that I'm happy to hand out with my cell number, so I'm available anytime.
Thank you.
Do you wanna have any?
So we, we typically don't comment back.
Okay.
For him, but if you will leave your card.
Absolutely.
With Ms. Brock.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no one else signed up for public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh one. I close public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero. I have ordinance, public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three, and ordinance to provide for the levy of taxes for the Kiwi Fire Special Tax District and to establish the budget for the Kiwi Fire Special Tax District for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-three, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. See anyone sign up for public hearing? No one signed up for public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three? Close public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three. Public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero five, authorizing the execution and delivery of an amendment to the fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Oconee County, South Carolina, and Borg Warner, PDS USA Incorporated, formerly referred to as Project EV PAC affiliate, dated as of September nineteenth, twenty seventeen, and other related matters. See if anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir.
No one signed up to speak? I close public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero five. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero seven, and ordinance authorizing for strength to Title Twelve, Chapter Forty-four of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, nineteen seventy-six, as amended, the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of avalerium taxes and special source revenue credit agreement by and between Oconee County, South Carolina, and Mind America LLC acting for itself, one or more current or future affiliates and other project companies collectively company, providing for a fee in lieu of avalerium tax incentive, providing for a special source revenue credit, developing a joint county industrial and business park between Oconee County and Pickens County, so as to designate the property of the project as part of the park, authorizing the execution and delivery of one or more grant agreements, authorizing the conveyance of certain real estate for project made, which is now Mind America LLC, and other related matters. See if I signed up for public.
Yes, sir.
Uh, no, no attendees for public hearing, I close ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero seven. Public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero eight, and ordinance authorizing the conveyance of certain real property owned by Oconee County to Mount Nebo Baptist Church, property consisting of approximately point one four acres, and being a portion of tax mount number two five six, dash zero zero, dash zero one, dash zero zero six, and authorizing the receipt of certain real property owned by Mount Nebo Baptist Church, property consisting of approximately point zero zero three four acres, and being a portion of tax mount number two five six, dash zero zero, dash zero four, dash zero one nine, and other matters related thereto.
Yes, sir.
No one signed up for public hearing, I close public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-three, dash zero eight. Can we move on to the third reading of the following ordinances? Uh, third reading ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero five, I just read prior to, it's on the screen. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero five?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
That is five, oh.
I have ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero seven, previously read on the screen above, I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Motion second, any comments?
Uh, yes, so this is, uh, mine, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And I would like to, uh, welcome them to our county, and we appreciate the investment in our county, and look forward to being great partners with them.
I'd like to echo that, um, like Mister Gilbert and his office for their, um, hard work in that, and I appreciate them, uh, choosing Oconee County when they could, uh, be anywhere they wanna, wanna be, so, uh, grateful to see and, um, look forward to an expansion, so. Thanks, sir.
I'd say I appreciate them choosing Oconee County, as you said, Mister Jamie Gilbert and the Oconee Economic Alliance and the work that they do, and I look forward to the official announcement coming out tomorrow. You feel the comment? Uh, all in favor?
Uh.
That is five, oh.
Okay, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero eight, uh, previously read on the screen above, does anybody have, do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Uh.
That is five, oh.
Okay. We have second reading on the following ordinances. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one, ordinance to establish the budget for Oconee County and to provide for the levy of taxes for ordinary, uh, county purposes, for the tri-county technical college special revenue fund, for the emergency services protection special revenue fund, for the road maintenance special revenue fund, for the bridge and covert capital project fund, for the economic development capital project fund, for the parks, recreation and tourism capital projects fund, for the debt services fund, for the victim services special revenue funds, for the capital vehicle equipment fund, all in Oconee County for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-three, and ending July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
Any motion?
Motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? I, I will.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Go ahead, mine.
I'll go ahead.
I was gonna say, I would like to, uh, sit down sometime and talk with the, uh, public defenders office and, and you, Ms. Brock, and put it all together in my mind.
Um, I am asking for a motion to re-implement the stepping scale which addressed, um, police and fire. We, we've done a lot of stuff, a lot of raises in the past to help address, um, hiring of, of police officers, and we need to continue to work towards that, and, and we've addressed that. Uh, hopefully, council will continue to address that next year and the following year after that, to continue to increase that pay, not only for those beginning work in the county in police, but also in fire as well, but also address, um, the compaction that we, uh, are, are feeling. So it is definitely, um, great to see the amount of, of, um, I guess the length of years that people have spent working for this county. And, you know, when you have your five and ten-year guys that don't make much more than that, the, the stepping scale that we were working on addresses and rewards the, the loyalty not only to the county, but to the citizens in which they serve. And EMS and fire is one of those that we need to make sure that we're equally addressing, um, a- as well, and, and to me, um, I'm not real, a real big fan of putting a million three seventy-four nine oh seven, um, in the budget and listing it under county council, I know it says salary study pay increase, et cetera, approved by council, because it, it seems to me, I, maybe I'm wrong, but I can't see where we've done it during the time where it's like, okay, we really don't know what we're gonna use this money for, or we're gonna use it for something, so we're gonna kinda budget for it. So, hence why the stepping scale was out in the open, really, really addressed that five, ten, fifteen-year, um, plus, um, individuals that's worked hard for this county and devoted their life for it, uh, especially in the police, uh, force on there. And that was the reason to address that over the years, and the ability to implement that, um, to me, is better than what is set up on here, because. Because I'm not gonna sit up here at county council and pick and choose who's getting raises. And nothing that we've done has been that way. Starting pay, yes, and that has needed to be addressed. Um, there's a lot of salary studies out there. I saw that on there. There's a lot of salary studies that we don't even have to pay for this out there that I know during my seven years of council, we've looked at and tried to address and look at the surrounding areas and not just say, hey, we're gonna be more than them or we're gonna do better because we definitely want the best and we honestly, we have the best. Um, a lot of them are underpaid, uh, which a step and scale was, was, was to address. And actually, the last four years, we've tried to address, is it enough? It's not enough. It needs to be more, but we're trying to stay within the parameters of what, what the growth that this county's seeing. Um, I mean, police is extremely important and we're addressing that, but EMS is important as well. I think just about everybody in this room in some way, shape or form has been touched by EMS or fire, your family has. So I don't wanna see them left out, uh, from what we're doing. And they are, again, with, as it stands right now, they are being touched in there. But my motion would be to, um, re-implement the step and scale which addressed a lot of the compaction, um, and still added for the increased sheriff's officer pay that we had discussed in the law enforcement meeting.
So I make that motion to amend the motion.
Right. Well, he was, he just had one motion. Oh, you're amending his motion?
Uh, okay, I'm making that motion.
All right, you're seconding his motion. Uh, any discussion?
Wait, I made a motion.
Oh, you made a motion.
I made, he, he was asking somebody to make the motion.
I'll second. I need to second it. Uh, any discussion?
Yes. I would love to have Sheriff Crenshaw and Chief Crime come up and tell us what they think about the step and scale versus some salary study. I'd love their opinion. I don't put them on the spot.
I'll make a motion to allow, we need a motion to allow. I don't know, Mr. Rick, we need a motion to allow that, or we in?
Maybe Mr. Durham's call at first. If, if he makes a decision that you all do not agree with, anyone can move to appeal that decision.
I'll second the motion to allow, I guess. Is that what we're doing?
Yes, sir. The question was, I'm sorry.
Step and scale.
Step and scale.
Are you seeing what it does for the folks that, under you? So is the chief. I'd like to know your opinion on that as the budget goes versus scrapping that and doing something else.
Well, call it whatever you, uh, whether it's step and scale or whatever. I know I had talked with Mr. Durham, uh, and have met with Mr. Durham, uh, you know, concerning trying to get the salaries up. And, and we're trying to, to avoid compaction as well, you know, for law enforcement, so. I, I, I think my goal was to try to get to that fifty thousand mark, you know, for the starting salary. And, uh, get, getting, getting very close, I know, and, and meet with Mr. Durham. So I, I think there's still some, some work to be done, you know, on that step and scale. Uh, that, there's some, there's some, there's some things that need to be adjusted a little bit. But overall, yes, I'm, am, I am in support of a plan that, that our employees know every year, you know, they're gonna get something. And, and, and if they stay here five years, then their salary's gonna be this. And if they stay here ten years, their salary's gonna be, gonna be this. Uh, it gives them something to, to look forward to, you know, something that, that we can hopefully retain them. So, so, so we do need a retention plan that is supported by, by our council in place.
We much, um, su- support the, the step and scale, but, you know, it is about raising the base so that we are, we're not competing. Um, we're constantly competing with other agencies and getting that up, and that addressed some of it. Most of the agencies we do compete with have some type of stuff in scale, which they know that if they're, even if they're not promoted, they will raise, the, the money will raise even without a cost of living. Um, and that is what we find people are leaving for i- in some cases, is they know, uh, in six months, here's my next step. And then a year, here's my next step. And to keep employees constantly over the last, uh, five years, our, our age in, in staying and, and our seniority is continuing to drop. Uh, because people, we're, we're, you know, we're continuing to lose to other agencies that provide stuff like that. So definitely, we do support it. Um, a- as with anything, um, we, the county needs, uh, the study also to be competitive because we are losing people, um, constantly, not just equal, um, jobs, but, but other, other counties, other areas and equal counties. It, it, people are traveling more for the jobs we do. Um, and so having anything in our, in our toolbox to actually hold those people in Oconee County and hold sometimes residents or pull residents from, from Anderson and those, um, is a big help in public safety.
Thank you. Put you on the spot, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, so the step and scale, while, while it has a lot of good, good to it, is not to where it needs to be. And that's why the motion was made, uh, last meeting. Uh, because we have one shot to get it right. And we have essential services. And that's emergency services, law enforcement, and other departments that's approaching critical staffing levels. And with people on the cusp of retirement too, if we don't get key areas up, then we're, we're gonna be hurting. So that's where that's, uh, millions and change was set aside for to not make a rash decision to pass it right now to make sure that we have it right for the employees, also for the citizens.
So, Mr. Chairman, what is the target date for the salary review?
As stated when the motion was made, previous meeting, we hope to have it implemented by discussing with Miss Brock by the fall.
By the fall? And will that include all departments, including the, uh, Chief Crime's department, or is that just the Sheriff's Department, sir?
I repeat my statement, Sheriff's Department, Emergency Services, and other key critical areas.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman. Wasn't the, the three percent raise that we gave the employees, uh, something to give the employees besides the step and scale, uh, program?
Well, Mr. Hart, the, the three percent was to give something immediately July first to, until we get the salary study complete, to make sure that money's available. Because otherwise, the way it's budgeted now, you, you're in essence giving a, a six percent increase across the board. Some could be a little more, some's gonna be a little less. But this gives us a chance to get key employees up to where they need to be. And, and with that being said, upon meetings with the sheriff, with the administration, hang on a second. I don't wanna make a motion on top of a motion, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna make a motion. Any other discussion on the motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Davis's comments. I don't, I'm sitting over here and you correcting if I'm wrong. Uh, the step and scale, the structure of it is probably a good thing. It just needs to be a little re-engineered. It goes out, what, man, twenty-eight years or something like that? It needs to be scaled back to a ten-year per, uh, scale. And we looked at it, and if you just go strictly, uh, step and scale, then you're never gonna get that bottom line up. The entry level. So you gotta get your entry level up first, and then you implement your step and scale from going forward.
Part of the reason why we're here is because through the years as previous councils have made, you know, incremental cost of living increases, the pay scales haven't been adjusted. So then you're left with trying to bring somebody in at ten-year-old wages, you know. That's, that's, foreign facing doesn't get you the value it did ten years ago. So this opportunity to give everybody something, something now, and then to make sure it's right going forward. But once you implement this, once you implement this step and scale, as is written now, then you're locked into it. And you, you can amend it and change it, but then that's another morale issue, you know, on employees.
But you don't feel like it's a morale for council to decide who gets raises and who doesn't? Because that's kind of what I feel like it's gonna become when you're talking about. I mean, it's, it's easy to address the sheriff's office. And it's easy to address EMS because those are extremely vital parts. But if we're standing up here to address, you know, and, and decide, hey, here's what the key employees are, it's kind of, to me, buying loyalty. And, and that's kind of what we're trying to address because, I mean, to me, seniority and experience is, is extremely important. And some of the stuff that hasn't been addressed in the last, you know, ten years, um, is why we're sitting here looking at this. Um, so while I agree, what y'all are talking about on that entry level pay, we have bumped a lot of that entry level up. Um, and most people, thank goodness, aren't starting at entry level because they have some experience. But, um, you know, from a sheriff's office standpoint, I agree with, with the statements that are made out there, you know, sixty-five thousand. That is a, you know, to me, you know, you get the best of the best, you're, you're, you're putting your life on the line, you're doing great things, and I agree with those statements. I agree with that fifty. But we're also, the minute, if you look at the increases to the budget, the majority of the increases y'all actually see in the budget and what's being complained about out there is salaries. And here we are talking about we're not paying enough people, but all of a sudden, we're sitting here talking about the budget's growing at whatever rate it is, but magically this year, we dropped it a million dollars and now we're back in line. So if we're addressing salaries and we're saying we're not paying people enough and y'all are saying the budget's too large, the majority of everything that we've done in the past few years has been salary, and it's not enough. Um, that's why we're losing people. And if you only sit here and touch on one or council decides on what key critical areas, um, you know, you think your phone's ringing now, just wait. Because everything we do in this county is critical. Is some of it life-saving? No. But it's all critical, um, to making this county run properly and rewarding seniority and longevity and, and experience is important. Because otherwise, when these people roll out, and several of them are staying longer, um, than they should. But if somebody comes in, is making five thousand dollars, um, less or two thousand dollars less than what they are, what is that showing? And that's, to me, I mean, I guess I'm wrong, maybe we didn't do enough studying on the step and scale to say that, you know, this was enough. Um, you know, but does, does, does there need to be continued increase in cost of livings? Yeah. It's not going down. But that's where your budget's going. I mean, school district, same thing. It's all salaries. You know, you wanna cut people, then you're talking about, what was a fifty million dollars was thrown out today? How many people we gonna lose when we do that? What are we gonna lose in this county by doing that just because it's a number?
Is there a motion on the floor, Mr. Everett, to set the budget to fifty million dollars?
I'm sorry?
I said, is there a budget on the floor to set the budget?
We're in discussion though, right?
Let's keep it on topic.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. That's talking about the budget, correct?
Is there a motion to set the budget to fifty million dollars?
Are you making, are you making a motion to call the vote? Make a motion to call the vote.
Make a motion. I want, I want you to talk for as many minutes as you wanna talk. Go ahead, Mr. Everett, Mr. Davis.
No, it's good, we're good.
Any other discussion? Uh, all in favor? Uh, all opposed? Okay, upon further research and discussion with county staff, administration, uh, elected officials in an effort to get the pay correct for needed employees, and that includes law enforcement, public safety, and other critical areas. As I mentioned, if you don't have a motor pool or roads department, the police cars can't get to where they need to go. Upon discussion and reviewing the budget, reviewing the pay scales and how to get people where they need to be, I'm gonna make a motion to take the three percent cost of living increase to be implemented July first to two percent cost of living and roll that remaining funds, which is, that would decrease it to six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And to move the, uh, line item to the line, council line item for raises, for studies, to one million, seven hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars. This results in no change in the budget's bottom line. And that's my motion. I have a second.
Second.
Uh, for discussion, this ain't a politi- some people politicize this, this isn't gonna take money from the employees. This is to make sure that key staffing areas and resources align to the key places. It's easy, and what the council's done in the past is just to blanket, say, six percent across the board. Uh, we need to know who needs what pay. We're council, yeah, I understand. But that's what we elected to do, to make tough decisions, to make sure that money's allocated fairly and properly so that the citizens, uh, get the quality services that their tax dollars pay for.
So currently inflation is five percent. Data, I guess, a week old. And so three percent is under inflation. Uh, we're all paying what the grocery store. I, I just can't agree with even reducing it. I'd rather have it five percent than three percent, but sorry, can't, can't agree with that.
Well, John, I, I agree with what you're saying, but this isn't taking money away for raises. This is to ensure that employees get something July first and to reserve the funds for proper allocations upon further.
Well, they will get three percent, boy, just cut it to two percent.
That's correct, two percent.
Can you identify what areas you don't find is critical so those people understand that they're not gonna be getting a raise?
Oh, Jordan, I will not. As you said, all areas are critical, but we know that we have critical staffing areas, but we have needs now. Any further discussion?
So this is amendment to?
This is amend the budget. A motion to amend the budget. To reduce the July first cost of living to two percent and to roll those funds in to the line item for future raises upon further study to one million, seven hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars.
So council will get a line item of one million, seven hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars without telling citizens exactly what they're gonna do with it until sometime later in the year.
This isn't know exactly as far employee salaries.
Certain. Employees. Critical employees.
Play games all you want, Jordan, I mean.
That's not a game.
It, it is.
It's a game of people's lives.
Any other comments? Uh, all in favor? Uh, all opposed? Uh huh. All that was the vote on the motion, now we have them vote on the budget. Uh, we have a motion second. We've had discussion. All in favor? Uh, all opposed?
Uh, I'm not voting.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I thought I wrote it down. There was a second on the motion to amend. Correct. Jennifer, did you get that?
Here was the second.
From three down to two, Mr. Hart.
Uh, second reading of the following ordinances. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three. In order to provide for the levy of taxes for the Kiwi Fire Special Tax District to establish the budget for the Kiwi Fire Special Tax District for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-three and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Uh, hear none, all in favor?
Uh huh.
That is five oh.
All right, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero nine. An ordinance amending section thirty-two dash two twenty-two of the Oconee County Code of Ordnances so that applicants for subdivisions that are designed to access state roads shall submit to and receive preliminary conditional approval from the South Carolina Department of Transportation prior to receiving final approval from the Oconee County Plan Department and other matters related thereto. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Uh huh.
That is five oh.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one zero. An ordinance amending Article four of Chapter two of the Oconee County Code of Ordnances by design of the arts and historical. of Chapter two of the Oconee County Code of Ordinances by disavowing the Arts and Historical Commission and other matters related thereto. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven, and ordinance authorizing the execution delivery of an end don to the lease agreement between Oconee County as lessor and the Firth Hills Forestead as leasing, in order to add additional property to the lease premises and other matters related thereto. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
First reading of the following ordinance, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero two, in order to establish the budget for the School District of Oconee County and buy for the levy of taxes for the operations of the School District of Oconee County for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-three, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Any discussion?
I'm gonna put a presentation up.
Did y'all wanna make a presentation?
Any changes from your last presentation?
Uh, we've reduced, yeah, we've reduced the request, the request to council by six hundred thousand, so it was fifty million, three hundred for the tax levy, we've reduced that to forty-nine thou, or forty-nine million, seven hundred thousand due to, um, additional state funding that we're being allocated.
Any other comments? Uh, hear none, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
First and final reading of the following resolution, resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero nine, a resolution approving the updated Anderson County and Oconee County multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan and other matters related thereto. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Second. Motion and second, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Uh, discussion regarding acts and items, discuss and authorize the county administrator to, uh, execute a rescission of grant agreement in relation to a grant made by Oconee County Conservation Bank for the purchase of property commonly, commonly referred to as the Lyles Track. This is discussion, uh, Ms. Brock or Mr. Root, one, would you like to inform us?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to just drop in. As y'all familiar with the paradigm for this, OCCB, Conservation Bank receives applications for grants, they go through a number of criteria to approve or not approve those, and then they send them on to council for final approval. Council approves it, then the money's are distributed for either a fee simple interest or a conservation easement interest. In this case, it's a fee simple interest. It was known by the parties and is documented, um, on a ratific, or essentially a modification of the grant agreement, that this was going to go to the, to the Forest Service. There was a grant agreement in place that said, we're gonna keep on the deed and, and track with this property, follows with this property, that this property was conveyed subject to the Conservation Bank ordinance, and essentially it's gonna be used for conservation purposes. It's understood the Forest Service is going to do that, it would be an eligible recipient under the bank ordinance, but the Forest Service will not take deeds, grant agreements, or anything like that, that encumbers land that they're gonna use. So, um, Natural Land Trust, who was, actually was gonna, kind of the, I don't wanna say middleman, but they're gonna get it and then transfer it to the Forest Service, got the grant, going about the transfer process, couldn't get it transferred without getting that land was released, so they just decided to remit the money back to the county, get the grant released, and then they can make the transfer to the Forest Service. So the Conservation Bank Board approved a revision of the grant and the receipt back of the money, and that's just to you all, similar to the same track, if all of them approve.
So this is money going back to the, uh, Conservation Bank, not to the county, this is private funds, these aren't taxpayer funds.
Correct, they never were taxpayer funds, and this will go back to the bank for the same kind of conservation purposes, initially. Yes, sir.
I got a question for you, too. The Forest Service is gonna purchase this piece of property, is that the whole gist of it?
Yes, sir.
Uh, what about the person that sold the property to start with? Does he get any money out of this?
He did, when, at the sale of the property, yes. So this money was, was used ostensibly by natural land to purchase the property, they're not taking that money back from the original seller, they're just giving this, this grant fund back to the county from other coffers, I suspect, but, yes, it, it won't be any loss to the, to the original land ever.
So is, is essentially having the easement lifted off of it?
Yes, sir.
So they, they signed the easement, I think part of it was agricultural based, I, I can't remember, but it's my understanding that the Forest Service now can turn it to a dove hunting field, is what I've heard.
There was talk about that, and there was some concern about that with the Conservation Bank Board, and that was dug into, and there was no discussions with any of the principals involved, Forest Service, um, I don't remember who all else we have, you wanna step up and say anything about that, Matt? Um, that is from Natural Land Trust and, and could speak to const, you know, conversations with the Forest Service in this evening.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Chair, thank you for having me. Um, my name is Max Stone, I'm the Executive Director of Natural Land Trust, and, uh, this year, we're actually celebrating our fiftieth anniversary, and so we protect land in Greenville and Pickens and Oconee County, we have a long history of protecting land here for the public, we have helped expand Oconee Station, uh, Mr. Shirley is here, he knows, we worked with him to help expand Chau Ram County Park, we led the effort to help expand Stump Palace Mountain, so we, our hearts are in this place and in this landscape. Um, originally, when we set out to protect this property, we spoken with several different agencies, the Forest Service, E N R, we worked with the, uh, the State Conservation Bank, and we always try to find different ways of protecting land. This property, we're calling it the Lyles Track, we actually call it the Wetstone Preserve, because it owns, it has a significant stretch of Wetstone Creek, which is a very important tributary to the wild and see in Tugger River. So that was our main interest in protecting this land, as Mr. Root explained, when we went through the process of trying to ultimately transfer this property to the Forest Service, we were unable to do so. There had been conversations about a dove field, but we did not start those conversations, they were just rumblings around the community. Uh, the Forest Service has no intention whatsoever in doing that, uh, so we, we addressed that during the Oconee County Conservation Bank meeting, um, and we also mentioned that when the Forest Service makes a management plan for their properties, it's open to public discussion, and it's open to public comment, so at any point, if that were ever to come up, the public could certainly, uh, raise questions and concerns about that. And so we have, uh, written a check and remitted that payment back to the county, and we've also, just in good faith, added interest, almost six percent interest to that, just so we support the Oconee County Conservation Bank and its mission, uh, and we wanna continue doing projects and protecting land here.
Thank you, Matt.
So, am I having any other questions, comments? So do we need to make a motion to accept that money, or, or?
Yeah, the, the motion is to accept the money and authorize a county administrator to execute the rescission agreement.
Okay. All right, so I make a motion to accept the money back into the Oconee County Conservation Bank and to execute a rescission of the conservation agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Here we have, uh, further discussion of the following items, P O T Commission State and Local A-Tax recommendation for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, amount one million, thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. These requests were unanimously approved by the P O T Commission on May fourth, twenty twenty-three. The P O T Commission and P O T staff recommends five hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars from local A-Tax for the fiscal year twenty-four, local A-Tax supplemental budget for routine expenditures eligible to offset general fund expenditures, grant cycles, and project specific funds will continue to be recommended quarterly meetings. P O T Commission and P O T staff recommends three hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars from the sixty-five percent state A-Tax Fund, and estimated one hundred and forty-seven thousand from the thirty percent A-Tax Fund, for a total of four hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars for fiscal year twenty-four, visit Oconee Sacklin Budget, the sixty-five percent funds are utilized for salaries to operate the visit Oconee office and are reimbursed to the county quarterly. The thirty percent funds by state law are specifically for tourism, advertising, and promotion distributed quarterly and are market dependent. Uh, local A-Tax balance included in conferences as of five-one-twenty-three equals five hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-six cents. Local A-Tax fiscal year twenty-four revenue projection is one million, ninety-five thousand dollars. Sixty-five percent state A-Tax balance as of five-five-twenty-two is four hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Sixty-five percent state A-Tax fiscal year twenty-four revenue projections equals three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It's the staff's recommendation that council approve the A-Tax recommendations for the P O T Commission. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just, it's, it's your call, but it's my understanding that all these items, you don't need to read the things that aren't bold, just, but shorten up the beating.
I, I saw some of this wasn't including the bold, some of the details, like the five hundred and sixty-six thousand and so on, so I, I included that. Okay, any other discussion? Uh, hear none, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Okay, we have a procurement number, RFP twenty-two dash zero-two, third-party planning review, uh, for the planning department, amounts to be determined, and it is staff's recommendation that council approve the award of RFP twenty dash zero-two for third-party planning review to Seaman, Whiteside, and Associates of Greenville-Sacklin, and contingent on approval of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget, planning fee schedules. Authorize the county administrator to execute the contract documents and to renew this contract for up to four one-year renewals, providing the services provided are satisfactory. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that?
Yes, sir. At one time, we did all this in-house, in-house, and, uh, it seemed like to me, if it's enough that another company can come in and make money off the county, that we could save money by having this same service inside our, uh, county council, uh, county employees.
And, Mr. Hart, I may, I may be mistaken, I'll, I'll let Ms. Brock correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's, it's kind of for emergency situations, like right now, we have two planners down, and it's to be able to contract it out for that, or for when big major projects may come along, we need, need some minister help.
Miss, did not, did we not have this in-house, uh, say, while Mr. Mulder was here, we had that in-house, and then we started farming some of it out?
During the previous Administrator Scott Mulder's time here, we had a contract with the R C I, we also had an engineer on staff who could do internal plan review, that engineer has since left and gone on his own.
There was a time that we were doing it all, and we, we fell short some way or another, and we started subbing some of it out, but there was a time that we were doing it all.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hart, you are right, and there are times now that we are capable of doing it all, um, as you have seen in the last Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting, the number of reviews coming into the office, whether they come to actual provision or not, has tripled over the last three years, and as Mr. Durb has stated, we are short, uh, two staff members in that office. Thank you.
Well, I think some of this will address, you know, gentleman that was here complaining about timing of that as well, you know, do I think the building's gonna slow down? No, um, you know, we're down staff members for multitude of reasons, um, so hopefully we can address that, uh, moving forward.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I received a, a piece of information that I think all of you will find useful and as a benefit to the public as well, just for further transparency on this, so in the event that a developer or contractor wanted an expedited plan, say if they wanted something turned around quick, they can go directly with the third party, and that is at the developer's cost, not the county's cost.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All right, Council Committee reports budget, finance, administration, Mr. Elliott.
The committee met on four-thirty P M. on May the second, twenty twenty-three, Mr. Jay Schickling, Chief Financial Officer for School District of Oconee County, provided the committee with an overview of proposed, uh, Oconee County School District, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Ms. Brock provided the committee with budget documents, updates, you mean budget document updates, noting a reduction of the budget by one point eight million, for a total request of sixty-five being two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Our board and commission appointments, we have an agricultural advisory board, District four, no questionnaires on file. I need a motion to enter executive session to receive legal advice and discuss personnel matter related to boards and commissions, and discussion regarding a contractual matter related to the C D of Seneca, the C D of Waha, and the C D of Westminster, and the Town of Salem. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
[inaudible]
We have no items to move on at this time, and I have a motion to adjourn.